Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, April 25th, 2022. Before we get it started, I just have something to read. As residents, and the council may have noticed, since our return to in-person meetings, we've experienced temporary technical difficulties, which we apologize for. It's a combination of new equipment and new studio staff, and your patience and understanding has been appreciated while we've sorted through the various operational issues. We'll continue to do everything we can to address any additional problems and concerns that may arise as we return to normal operations. And again, we are sorry for any of the inconvenience that recent audio and technical difficulties may have caused you. There are a couple of things that you can do to, as participants in the meetings, to help the meetings go smooth. When you're ready to speak, please turn on your microphone and speak directly into it from about a fist-length distance. When you're finished speaking, please turn off the microphone, and a reminder that voice votes require no microphone. Okay, we'll move on. We'll call this meeting to order, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here. And I do want to note that Councilmember James Quisenberry had planned to call in tonight, but technical difficulties prevented that from happening tonight. Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting from April 11th, 2022. Can we have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Are there any substantive corrections? Grace?
Thank you. I do have one that is small and I think also substantial. On the last page, Item C, Resolution 32R, I'd just like to include in the third to last sentence, this item was, is to allow a, insert data center and solar array facility.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. Next item is public input. If you'd like to address the Urbana City Council, please step forward, state your name for the record.
Alan X. Axelrod, City of Urbana. I'm speaking to you tonight in my capacity as the campaign lead of No Amish Shut-Offs, a zero-dollar, all-volunteer grassroots campaign of 54 member organizations spanning the state of Illinois and adjacent states. So, things are getting worse. Today, the seven-day average was over 3,000 new cases a day in Illinois. In New York, deaths started to increase. They have been increasing in the number of COVID caseloads. They're now up at about 7,000 new ones a day in terms of their seven-day average. This took me a little bit by surprise in Illinois, until I revisited the $80 million and the criteria for that, that we had won at the beginning, or at the end of March, for UDAP II, Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program II. Unlike UDAP I, which applied to anybody who had received a utility subsidy in the three prior years, it was initially $80 million, and it was expanded to $115 million. Of that, $112 million were spent from the time that it started in April until the end of June. The $80 million for UDAP II only applies to the people who currently are enrolled in LIHEP, or a utility subsidy, this season. It doesn't apply to anybody in the two or three years prior. Part of the context for this is, we won this by showing the government that even though they didn't put it in their press release, that they had a lower enrollment rate in the utility subsidy program. Two, is that unlike UDAP I, which had a depressive effect on COVID caseloads, this doesn't change anything, unfortunately. It maintains a status quo that we had. As people here have mentioned many times during the winter moratorium, in the mandatory nature of its statute, someone enrolled in a utility subsidy programs is not going to be shut off. So, it just continued that status through July. That means everybody else may well have been shut off. A noticeable bump started at around April 14th or 15th. However, we have not yet confirmed when utility shut-offs began, or whether they began, because there may be some latency. That is to say, our current situation may further devolve. It is not necessarily totally due to BA2 and its cousins. BA2 being the subvariant of Obocon that is more infectious. So, all this is to say that with the existing $80 million, simply expanding the eligibility criteria and asking for that eligibility criteria to be expanded, just like they had last year, would do a substantive amount of good without costing the state anything more than staff time. So, for those of you who can advocate to our governor, please consider that route. Because we are not seeing a depressive effect, cases are continuing to go up. One other thing that I would like to note is that, yet again, it seems that we won another statewide moratorium that was part of the winter moratorium. There were additional voluntary protections on top of that, when we had passed resolutions in multiple bodies, including the Bloomington, or the McLean County Democratic Party, among others. We passed a total of 12 during the span leading up to Champaign County Board. So, anyway, the issue is, it's not just cases going up, it's deaths going up. It lags. Illinois is not going to be substantially different in that dynamic than New York. We need to have stronger protections. We need to consider moving to remote options again, which sucks logistically, I know. But we actually need to recognize that this may not be the peak of our current dynamics, like it was with the Brazilian strain of the coronavirus last year, which was impacted positively by UDAP I. We may be on another spike. This was acknowledged in a March 25th press release by the state government, saying that although protections have been withdrawn, they are prepared to redeploy resources as necessary. That redeployment is necessary. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Julie Watkins. I'm an Urbana resident, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk. I wanted to speak a bit about the Open Meetings Act and hybrid discussions that have been going on here. And a lot of times, everybody, council and public, has been talking about laws. But it's really a lot of politics going on at the same time, because laws are not neutral, laws aren't necessarily enforced, laws get changed in the legislature. That's the political process. And so, we have the Springfield story, somebody would, people were saying, last week, at least one, maybe two people were talking about it. There seems to be, there was legislation about specifically allowing that it would be, you know, legal to have hybrid in, in the open, that the Open Meetings Act would allow that. Now, if that, if I'm understanding the story correctly, what that means, it's, it makes really, it's a political statement that a legislation that was proposed during COVID to, to give cities permission didn't pass. So, that's politics. Now, you have another story that there are cities that are having hybrid. That's another story. If they don't get stopped by lawsuits, well, it's legal. Pragmatically, it's legal. And so, instead of debating whether something is legal or not, part of that is, how are the public and politicians and the elected people going to form, how they should advise the people in Springfield and locally make explanations? Because I'd much rather have a discussion of theory about where we're trying to go. So, I wanted to bring up the politics of it, and I would like people to make comments about the politics. And also in, I've made this political/legal discussion before, when I was trying to make comments about the Urbana FOP contract, that there's a difference of opinion about whether or not the sidebar to that contract is legal, if it discriminates or not, you have a difference of opinion. And so, I would like some more political discussions about that, about, you know, because the disagreements are about whether or not there's discrimination happening, and whether or not what's a bona fide exception to the discrimination situations. So, and I would like a member, as I've requested before, a past or present member of the FOP, to defend why they feel what they feel about that sidebar. So, I'd like that. And again, I would like more political discussion about the Open Meetings Act and hybrid discussion. And I'd like to thank you for listening to my words about this. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Urbana. My name is Tracy Chung. So, back in July 2021, when we resumed in-person meetings, the public asked, the public asked City Council if we could continue giving public input remotely, for example via Zoom, as well as giving public input in person. So, this is what Mayor Marlin said.
Secondly, on the issue of the hybrid meeting or continuing with Zoom public input, we have, it's the opinion of both our city attorney and folks I've consulted with at the Illinois Municipal League, that once the overall emergency declaration is lifted for the state, that Zoom input will no longer be an option under the Open Meetings Act as currently written. And we need to be very, very careful to comply with the Open Meetings Act and the-
Okay. So, Mayor Marlin said that we could not, we could not have the option of giving Zoom public input. But when the public asked Mayor Marlin and City Attorney David Westner to explain why, back in July and even a few weeks ago, they could not explain why. Instead, this is what Mayor Marlin said.
And as you know, in the past, you did receive a memo regarding hybrid meetings. I don't believe I ever said it was a violation. I said we didn't know if it was at the time. But it's also a question, as you note, of time, of logistics expense and staffing. And you had a memo on that last, was it last summer?
Okay. So then, when I brought up last week the discrepancy between what Mayor Marlin said in July and back a few weeks ago in April, this is what Mayor Marlin said.
I'd like to address the claims made by Tracy Chung tonight, and I reject what you said. I told the truth last summer, and it remains true today. When I had questions about remote meetings and options for remote public input, I did consult with the city attorney. I did consult with the Illinois Municipal League. Both had questions and were not certain. At the time, and it currently stands today, the only authority we have in the City of Urbana to hold a remote meeting is by virtue of the authority of the statewide emergency declar-
Wait. Did Mayor Marlin say a remote meeting? Let's listen again.
I am lying with, by the governor. And that is, we have in the City of Urbana to hold a remote meeting is by virtue of the authority of the statewide emergency declaration made by the governor. And that is renewed on a monthly basis. There was a bill in the Illinois General Assembly that failed to make it out this session, that would have given, would have given individual municipalities an opportunity to make decisions about remote meetings on their own. But for you to say-
Okay. So, when did this conversation change from allowing the public to give public input remotely to the legalities of a remote meeting? Remote meetings, the legalities of remote meetings was never in question. Mayor Marlin, please explain. How did this conversation switch to the legalities of remote meetings? City council members, if you sit here and not say anything about it, and continue to condone this type of dishonest conversation, this type of manipulative conversation, you might as well pack your bags and go home now. Moving on, you guys have received confirmation from the attorney, from the Illinois Attorney General, that it is okay, it is legal for a public body that is conducting in-person meetings to allow the option of remote public input. You guys have known this for a couple of weeks, but yet somehow we are not discussing that option. Instead, we are going roundabout with this dishonest conversation led by our mayor. So, people of Urbana, City Council, this is our mayor, and this, this is the type of discussion that she leads. So, if you guys would like to listen to what Mayor Marlin said, and, and as well as the transcripts, they are all available on CUPerspective.org. I urge you to go read it, and you can, you can make up your mind. You can review the videos, you can review the transcripts. And I really hope that, since this is all out there right now, and we have the determination from the Illinois Attorney General, David Westner, you do have that confirmation. Can we please have an honest discussion? Thank
Hi, my name's Brandy McCoy. I'm an Urbana resident. I want to thank staff in advance for the upcoming presentation on the Dr. Ellis subdivision. I really appreciate this sort of accommodation for members of the community like myself, who haven't engaged in this space since 2013 and earlier. As, as a resident, you know, coming into these meetings, into these sorts of spaces, and having only the context and background from the residents who are speaking about it and who I can speak to about it, and, and not understanding where I can get the context of like the city's perspective, and honestly seeing the, the city government just blatantly ignore commentary regarding it, and, and other issues as well. To me, it serves as, as a hurdle to civic engagement, which is my goal here. So, again, I really appreciate the accommodation. I'm excited to learn more about the context and the background, not that it's an exciting topic, but I'm excited to learn more about the, the context and the background, as well as the barriers. Sorry. I also want to thank Councilmember Wilkin for your request for cost estimates. I think that's an important part of the conversation, as it probably serves as an important barrier to the conversation. Again, I'm, I'm really, really eager for the presentation to learn that context and background from the city's perspective, as well as the barriers specifically. And I hope that the conversation around those barriers can be one that is conducive to addressing them, rather than, you know, a list of why we can't do something. I really hope that we can have an open conversation and, you know, figure out how to do right by, by the community members who have been experiencing this issue for, for a very, very long time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? Okay. We'll move on to council input and communications. Grace?
Thank you. I was hoping maybe we'll hear more in staff report, but confirming about the networking event tomorrow. I don't know if there's a plan to share more about if that is happening tomorrow, and kind of advertising that for our networking partners. And then, I'm also in favor of doing a discussion about hybrid meetings. I think there's a lot of layers to it, and I'm, you know, in support of trying to make that accessible. I think with the pandemic and with physical constraints, I know that there are a few people who are not able to give their input. And people say, you know, they can do emails, which is true, but that's also not accessible for everyone. And I know that there are certain people who definitely fall through those cracks of not feeling comfortable with email and not being able to physically attend. So, I am in favor of that, and I would definitely like to have a discussion with the logistics of it, about how or if that could happen. I think it would also be helpful for council members to have that option when they're traveling for work or excused things, so we don't have just the voice over the ceiling. It's a little hard to interact with, so I think that there would be a few benefits to being able to have a more interactive kind of meeting when people aren't able to be physically present. And again, yeah, the CDAP event, I'd love to learn more about that networking event and how that's going. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Alder Person Wilkin's point about the hybrid meetings. I support hybrid meetings. I don't see the Open Meetings Act prohibiting that. And I think more accessibility for the public, especially our senior citizens, being not always able to come down to in-person meetings. So, I would like to see that happen, and I support it.
Regarding the whole issue about hybrid meetings, and I don't know, I may be the only councilperson that has experienced the blatant racism that has come across during Zoom meetings. I can be called nigger to my face right here, because that is exactly what I've been called on Zoom meetings. And if you're not brave enough to show your face, then you don't need to have the luxury of not showing your face and using a fake name and a fake email address to call me nigger. I've had enough of that. So, maybe that lets certain people know that I am not for hybrid meetings. You, there are, there is email. Last time I checked, the postal service works just fine, as well as when we finally get our technology together, the telephone will work as well, if, if we choose to even use that. But regarding a Zoom hybrid, what I've noticed during the past couple of years are several people who are not brave enough to show their faces. And well, and you don't get the opportunity with a Zoom meeting. But they would also use fake names and fake emails. And I have been called nigger more during a Zoom meeting than I've ever been called in my life. So, that's my response regarding the hybrid meetings. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay. Move on to reports of standing committees. Councilmember Mary Alice Wu.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, we have two, three, four, five, five items on the consent agenda. I'll read all five of them.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2022-04013, and Ordnance Amending Schedule J of Section 23183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets for Cottage Grove Avenue. Resolution Number 2022-04033R, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of a Grant for Market at the Square USDA Pandemic Relief and Protection Program of 2022. Resolution Number 2022-04035R, Resolution Appointing Interim Human Resource Manager as the authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for 2022. Resolution Number 2022-04036R, Resolution Approving an Under-Governmental Agreement with the Housing Authority of Champaign County for Media Production Services. And finally, Ordinance Number 2022-04014, and Ordnance Repealing Ordinance 2020-04021 pertaining to Ratification of Emergency Order 2002.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll? Or does this recall a roll call vote? Voice. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Onto the regular agenda?
Yes, please.
All right. On the regular agenda, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval of Resolution Number 2022-0403R, Resolution Approving the City of Urbana Home Consortium, Champaign-Urbana-Champaign County Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2022-2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you. I still had quite a few questions on this one. I don't know if we're able to have those. Thank you so much. And I apologize, I wasn't able to get these in earlier in the week. I was able to go through the draft online, and definitely appreciate all the work that went into this plan. And I have some questions to make my own informed decisions, and then also questions that the public may likely have as well. I had some kind of big-picture ones first, which is, I was wondering kind of how much input was wanted or typical from council on this. And kind of like, can we give input or approval on the final version? Because my other question was, you know, how far along is this one? Like, last week, you mentioned that there was date changes. And there's a few things that I found that looked like they were just typical of a draft and needed to be deleted out or something. So, I guess I'm just not sure how much or what kind of input, if any, you're looking for besides approval, and how far along this version of the draft is.
Thank you. So, this is the final version. It's due to HUD May 15th, so there is a little bit of that time deadline. There, as we discussed last week, there were some errors with small date things that have been changed. It's a HUD template issue, and I've contacted their IT team about that. So, in terms of, there's no substantive changes at this point. We did present this back in March, mid-March, I believe, for, for your input, more substantive input on, you know, if you had questions or larger issues. But we are hoping that this is the final version, that we can submit by May 15th, at the latest.
Thank you. Okay. I think I have quite a few specific questions, if I may. So, first of all, am I understanding it correctly, that there's the goals or objectives in that table, and then there's the projects within that? Is that a correct understanding?
Yes.
And so, I was wondering with those, for example, like with infrastructure, on the goals table, it said $0 allocated for that. And then on the projects, it says there's infrastructure, 217 some thousand, that says under the project goal falls in line with infrastructure. I just didn't know if that discrepancy, if you could explain that.
It's not a discrepancy. That's, it's how the tables are formatted, so I do apologize, it can be a little disorienting. If you read the narrative, it will describe the projects that that funding is dedicated toward. And so, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's the last category. It talks about the capital projects that that funding can be dedicated toward. So, it's not that we're not funding infrastructure, we are. It's just under that last category, because that's how we are sort of categorizing the goals. So, it's in that narrative section of each question, where it kind of breaks down more what projects specifically will be funded with that amount.
Okay. I was just confused, because it says gold-supported was support infrastructure improvements in these census tracts. But under the goal, it said $0 allocated. Are you saying that's not how it works?
So, for that category specifically, there's $0 for that, that line. But if you look down at the, the last goal at the end of that chart, that's where it breaks down, the, the capital projects, including infrastructure. It's, it's how the HUD chart is categorizing the projects, but we're able to kind of put things in different buckets depending on how we want the plan to work out. So, we're still funding all of that, and you can read it in the narrative part. It's just that we're kind of breaking it out differently to align with kind of- kind of breaking it out differently to align with kind of how we want it to look. So it is all there, it's just that one line, it says zero, because that specific HUD goal, we're not funding this year, but that doesn't mean we're not funding infrastructure, because infrastructure is an eligible category in other goals as well. So it's just kind of you have to look in the right area.
Okay, thank you. My other question was about the CDBG Public Services, that there were 61,000 for that, and it includes the Youth Services Grant, along with Transitional Housing and Neighborhood Cleanup, and I was just wondering if that was enough, or if there was other funding sources, because I thought last year, we did 100,000 for Youth Services Grant, I don't know if we're continuing, planning to continue that amount next year.
We are, and so the Youth Services Grant, it's actually two pots of funding, so we're using the CDBG Public, a portion of the CDBG Public Service, and then matching it with City General Fund. And the reason is, we're a little bit constrained, because HUD has placed a public service cap of 15%, so we can't spend more than 15% on that entire CDBG amount on public services. So we can't spend the whole $500,000 on public service programming, HUD doesn't allow that, they have that 15% cap. So with things like the Youth Services Grant, what we did last, for the last cycle, is take $25,000 in CDBG Public Service Funding, match that with 75,000 of General Fund, and then that's where that $100,000 pool comes from. So we kind of have to be creative in terms of how we categorize things, because again, HUD does have those caps that they'll put on some things, so like rental assistance, for example, is considered a public service, so it just kind of gets a little tricky, how you prioritize what to spend that money on, because it's a big need in the community, those public services. But we just, we can't spend all of it on those, because HUD doesn't, they want to see that you're, you know, targeting a breadth of different projects, not just public services. So, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, thanks for clarifying that one. And another one, I was wondering about funding or support for the low-barrier shelter and homeless shelter assistance in here. I was wondering if that's included in here, or is eligible for this funding?
So the funding for the low-barrier shelter was actually from City General Fund, because it wasn't eligible at that time under CDBG, because it wasn't in the annual action plan from last year, so it was just a little bit more flexible to use City General Fund money. Broadly speaking, CDBG Public Service Funding could be used for projects like that. Again, you run into that issue of the cap, you know, if you spend it on that, then you can't spend it on Youth Services or Transitional Housing, so it's just kind of thinking creatively. So the winter barrier, the winter low-barrier shelter was, that was all General Fund, that was not CDBG.
And then, for this coming year's action plan, I'm not seeing it in here also, so is it also not in this year, so couldn't it be used for that?
There is, some of the public service funding could be used for like wraparound programming, not shelter specifically, again, because there are agencies that are funding that work in the community, and we've partnered with them, and we are, you know, committed to continuing to partner with them, maybe in terms of General Fund or other sources. But in terms of CDBG, because we have those public service programs, like for example, the Transitional Housing, you know, we already have people in those houses, we have to make sure that stays funded. The Youth Services Grant, you know, we've heard from the community that was something they wanted to prioritize, so we kind of have those projects. There could be some wiggle room over the next year, if that came up, but as of right now, not, it's not a priority in that plan.
And you're saying because we're already kind of at our allowance for-
At that cap, yeah, 15%.
Okay, because yeah, I think that is a huge priority. I think reading in here, it kind of says like, well, the county has shelters, and they're year-round, and, oh, yes.
I could clarify that. Brayden's correct, we used General Fund money last year. We don't know yet at this time what the need will be for the low-barrier fund. Champaign's discussing, you know, they have a new plan, which we all learned about late Friday. So if we need to fund low-barrier shelter, again, we can use ARPA funds, if the council decides that's an expenditure you want to make for ARPA money. So we won't necessarily have to draw on CDBG or the General Fund for the low-barrier shelter going forward. We can use ARPA funds, as did the county and the City of Champaign.
Thanks. So I think that, you know, there's opportunity cost with that, using ARPA for that also means less ARPA for other things, so I think that's something to consider. And just saying, in the plan, it makes it, the way I read it, it makes it kind of seem like it's not a big issue, and I feel like that is a big issue with having shelters available in the county especially, that are low-barrier and in Urbana. And I had another question in here, about if I was reading the resolution correctly, I was confused at first that it's, that the council is saying, given the mayor, the mayor is designated to execute the agreements, and then the next section four is that the action plans will be shoved, so executing those agreements would then be approved by council. Am I reading that correct? So kind of designated, section three is designating the mayor as the kind of point person for all these sub-agreements, and then section four is saying that there will be review and approval for sub-grantee agreements, is that right?
Yes, and those sub-grantee agreements, like for example, the Youth Services, those always come before council to vote on them and to approve them.
Okay, thank you so much for answering those questions, and I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Don't we have a motion?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item, Mary Alice.
Sorry, I'll see here. I misplaced my papers, we'll go from last week and see if we can do this. Thank you. All right, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval for resolution number 2022-04037R, resolution approving the allocation of ARPA standard allowance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to reports of special committees, there are none, reports of officers. Carol.
So, thank you for mentioning the networking event we're having tomorrow night, and just want to make a distinction between that one and the C-DAP networking event, which is specifically targeting prime contractors and subcontractors in the field of construction, and that will be May 24th at the Phillips Recreation Center, and invitations will be going out for that, but we certainly hope the council attends. As we do, I hope you attend tomorrow evening, the Urbana Business Network Mixer, as we're calling it, which is going to be at Riggs Beer Company on High Cross Road, and that's more of a kind of replacement-type event for the kinds of events that the Urbana Business Association used to have. So it's really for businesses just to get to know each other and the kinds of services that are being provided. There'll be, I think, a lot of staff there, and I believe based on what we heard today, we're expecting at least 25 businesses to show up, and we're looking forward to it, because people don't always know what's going on outside of maybe their particular either field, or their, wherever their business is located, so it's a great chance for businesses to help, you know, cross-promote and things like that. So, tomorrow, and I don't think I said the time, six to eight?
Tuesday.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Tuesday.
Okay, and I want to remind folks that this coming weekend, beginning, really Thursday, the events start, it's marathon race weekend, minus the marathon, but with all the other races. If you are new to the community, or have forgotten what it was like, I do want to let you know that the footprint of the races is considerably smaller, and the routes have changed. So you'll want to check course information at illinoymarathon.com/course-info, and if you have any questions about course or race logistics, don't call our office, you can call the Marathon Community Hotline at 217-974-1951, and they'll be happy to answer your questions. We expect 10,000 to 11,000 people participating in the race, and hundreds and hundreds more volunteers and visitors cheering them on. This is a wonderful weekend, and after a three-year hiatus, it's just great to see the marathon back. Any other reports of officers?
Yes, question?
Carol, you mentioned the C-DAP event is May 24th. My notes say May 23rd.
Let me just check my-
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to put out the wrong info. No, it was, I think what I probably had said was the week of May 23rd, and we have since confirmed that it is Tuesday, May 24th. And that'll be first thing in the morning, probably around 8:00 a.m. Contractors like to get started early and get back to business, so I don't think we're going to start at 7:30, but we might.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have one last item of business on the agenda, and that's an appointment to the Plan Commission. I'm pleased to submit the following appointment, and that is for a term ending June 30th, 2025, and I would like to appoint William Andreessen. Will Andreessen is a 27-year resident of the City of Urbana, works as an Automated Data Collection Coordinator for Applied Pavement Technology. He coordinates data collection efforts and manages projects while utilizing GIS software to simplify and enhance productivity for the company and its clients. Will holds a bachelor's degree in geography and geographic information science, a master's in urban planning, both from the U of I Urbana-Champaign. He also worked as a graduate intern for Illinois Extension in Community and Economic Development, and was a planning intern here at the City of Urbana. In his application, he wrote, quote, "I take great pride in this city and what it has to offer. I've been incredibly fortunate to live in the same place for so long, being part of a community that I constantly find new ways to connect and interact with, as well as give back to, even after all these years. I earned my graduate degree in urban planning to better understand and explain my surroundings, but even more so to improve my community. I may not be a direct planner now, but I have keen grasp of planning principles, and would like to join Urbana's Plan Commission to help utilize those skills in any way I can, not just to improve the locale for myself, but for the entire community," end quote.
Is there a motion for approval? Or is there a motion?
I'd move approval for William Andreessen to Plan Commission, term ending June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many positions are left on Plan Commission? How many seats?
I can get that information back to you. There's a total of nine seats. This may, this may be the only vacancy, but I will check.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just want to say that I appreciate having a candidate who looks so well-qualified, and I feel really hopeful from what we've been provided and a little bit of internet perusing, and I hope that William has a positive and productive time on the commission.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes. With no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. See you on the racecourse.